Okay, at 7:00 PM, it's time to start. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first item here is to welcome our visitors. If you're a visitor and this is your first time zooming with us, we're glad you're here. So we will start with the flag salute. Director Evans, would you lead us in the flag salute tonight?
Sure, hopefully it's not too loud in my house. I have stuff on, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. The next item is agenda changes. Do you have anything, Eric?
I apologize. I had somebody talking in my ear. Yes, agenda changes. Let's do, I'll make a motion to add approval of Director Draper's requests on our agenda.
All second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add the approval of Director Draper's request to our agenda. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, seeing them, we'll proceed to vote. Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez. Director Evans.
Yes.
And I will vote. I will vote yes at this time. But I would like to remind the board that the superintendent has other pressing issues, so I would possibly be in favor of extending the timetable that this request is filled in under. Okay, is there, are there any other agenda changes? Seeing now, we'll move on to the consent items. The board would, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Still moved.
Do we have a second?
All second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent items. Director Rodriguez.
I.
Okay, Director Evans.
Yes.
Director Draper.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, we've approved the consent items. The first, the next item is the report and recognition. We'll start with Director Draper for board bits.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Director Evans, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I do. So, you know, it's, it's been weird. It's just been, there's no doubt, everybody thinks that. Everybody's been working hard and appreciate everybody's hard work. Superintendent, you know, superintendent and all the administration, all the teachers were coming back. We hoped that we were going to come back and have kids in school. I know that's changed. We kind of in a fairly dire situation here in Mount Huron County with our numbers. And I, I hope that we get out of that very soon. I do want to kind of give a shout out with that said, you know, I think some of the people that are really upset about this, besides the teachers, are also our coaches. And I've seen a couple of really great examples of some things from some of our coaches that they've been putting out on Facebook. So I'll give a shout out to the, the boys basketball coach, Kevin Attila. I've seen him. He's been posting some videos out there just, just for something to do when they can't see each other in person. And so I really appreciate that as a parent and, and as a board member. I appreciate to see examples like that, people going up and beyond to get that out there.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that our staff all the way around has been working really, really hard to get ready for school. And I pray that we will be blessed to be able to move forward and educate kids. And that the kids will grow and thrive amidst the adversity that they're facing right now. So that's my hope. Okay, we're going to go on to the finance report. Mary Jo.
Blanca might have something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I asked. I apologize. Please forgive me, Blanca.
I will. Thank you. I just want to thank the cooks. They are making those lunches for the children. I've heard a lot of comments, the grandma sometimes take half. They're saying that the lunches are so good. I don't know if we need to send extra for the grandmas. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I did notice on the bills that we were buying locally from some of our vendors for the lunches. I thought that was really neat. I applaud that effort. Thank you, Blanca. The financial report, Mary Jo, please.
I honestly don't have very much. I've been busy working on closing year end. We have open enrollment for insurance going on right now, which is always fun. And then I've been working on the internet audit.
So, Mary Jo, we had a question. I think we talked about it, and I don't remember if we talked about it in this meeting, but board book, is it, are we going to be having to go to the premier version on that?
Yeah, this is actually our last month with the old classic version. So we'll have to, Jolene and I both signed up for the, the training course. And then we can migrate the data over, but we didn't want to do it right before meetings, so.
So would that be a good thing for our board to get trained in how to run premier, or is it going to be pretty much the same?
I don't have any idea. I haven't done the training yet to see. I anticipate it being pretty much the same.
Okay.
I think it's going to have a little more bells and whistles on our side, hopefully, because it's pretty archaic, but, but I, I am anticipating all of our data to transfer over. And the state it is right now will be pretty similar to what you guys are using now. So if we need training, we can totally do it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. With that, it's time for the superintendent's report. Superintendent Abizou.
And so I sent you my report, and I know it's pretty lengthy. I'm not going to go into detail on everything, but I'm going to hit some of the high points. New guidance was issued to us for a fourth or fifth time on August 19th. Well, Ox 19 was the new specialized guidance, but prior to that, we received guidance in regards to reopening, and that mostly consisted of additional metrics that were to be required for reopening. And, you know, those, those metrics included, you know, basically gave us numbers to meet in terms of our county numbers. And obviously, we're not close to meeting that yet. But just after that, they came back and gave us additional guidance that was really about providing some flexibility to rural and remote schools. So although that didn't help us, help us much, what some of that guidance did do was allow for some limited in-person instruction. And I'm going to have Melissa speak to that in just a second. But aside from those things, the new guidance also gave us a really great toolkit to use. It's sort of a guide on what to do if you have a breakout. What if, what if you have a staff member who gets it? What if you have a student that gets it? And, and so on and so forth. So that was really helpful. It also included additions to our comprehensive distance learning requirements. And mostly it clarified some things that were, you know, a little bit blurry before. And then some additional safety protocols. So we, we had to get bigger notebooks to, to really sift through all that guidance. So we were super excited to hear that we might possibly be able to have some limited in-person instruction. And we kind of got our hopes up a little too soon. It's, there's still a lot of things that go along with that. And so I'm going to let, Melissa really was the one that dug into that and, and learned about it. So Melissa, do you want to share out?
Sure. Hopefully, my internet stays stable because it's been kind of wonky tonight. But I think a lot of people might be wondering why we're not jumping right into this in-person option. And I think it's really important to understand that the comprehensive distance learning is much more, has much more rigor, is much more robust than what we were required to do last spring. And in fact, is more robust than the online charter schools in the state are required to do. So we felt like it's really important, the comprehensive, comprehensive distance learning, even though we were not hoping it would be our main thing, is our main thing right now, and it's considered our core program. So we really needed to spend a lot of time helping our teachers ramp up to that challenge, I guess you could say. And they've all been participating in hours and hours of professional development over the last few weeks. And the in-person, limited in-person instruction is going to add a whole nother layer of things to our staff. So we felt like it was really important to have our core in a solid place before we moved into adding that. There are a number of reasons that we can allow students to participate in the limited in-person instruction when we're ready to do it. Those include addressing connectivity and access issues, academic support assessment, providing social, emotional, or mental health supports, building relationships, increasing peer-to-peer interaction, engagement and attendance, building school and community culture. So you can see that there's a lot of, a lot of things we can do, and that's not the end of the list there. What we have to do as a district is that we will have to resubmit our blueprints to the local health authority and Department of Ed and complete some additional sections to it in order to have students in schools. And we're really ready to do that. What we have to do first is establish a really clear criteria for students to participate in limited in-person instruction. And what the criteria, we have to be very cautious that it does not lean on protected class status of people. So the criteria will have to be broad enough to allow us to make decisions across our protected classes and into our general ed students. An example that I think of is when we think about access, and I think that will probably be the heart of our criteria, is that students who are in a welding program, for instance, they cannot access their credits without actually having some hands-on experience, right? So some of those students might be the ones that we would choose to have some of the limited in-person instruction when we're ready to do that. I think hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll be ready to present to you our criteria and kind of a plan for rolling into that. One thing that is important to know is it is very limited. It's a maximum of two hours a day, less than 10 in cohorts and very limited, limited numbers of cohorts that kids can be exposed to, but also limited cohorts that our staff can be exposed to. So that, it just will, will require a whole nother layer of planning. I think that's the big idea that you just need to know that we're working on in the background, but we really felt like we needed to get the comprehensive distance learning kicked off and people feeling comfortable with it. One thing, there are metrics involved, and that is something that we're really going to have to lean on the local health, health authority with. And Craig is here, so he's one of the people that is our contact for our blueprints, et cetera. The metrics involve having no students or staff that have had a positive COVID test in the last 14 days prior to entering into this. And I know we do probably today have staff members that are waiting for tests to come back. So that will be a little bit of a challenge, just the management and monitoring of that. And we'll really have to work with our local health authority. And also really rely on people to be self-reporting if they don't live in the area. So, does anybody have any questions? I think I kind of covered the big ideas there. Or Nikki, was there anything else you wanted me to elaborate on?
So I have a question. Negative Nellie here. It sounds like there's not much chance to really get kids back in the buildings when you talk about that kind of a metric. We have 2,500 kids in our district, and how many staff members do we have?
A hundred, yeah, close to five hundred.
So, so we're talking 3,000 people, and we can't have one positive test for two weeks?
Well, I'm hoping, Renee, that's something that we can kind of get some clarification on. And we actually have some questions into the Department of Ed about that. What we're hoping is that if we go through a process of identifying and kind of deciding what, what it is that we'd like to do or accomplish with the limited in-person instruction, that we can look to just those smaller groups of people that would be involved in it as opposed to everybody. I mean, to me, that makes sense because those are the people who are going to have exposure. So we'll work with Sarah Poe and Craig at the Health Department to, to make sure that we're doing that correctly. It's not actually incredibly clear in the guidance. I expect that's something that ODE will clarify, and maybe Nikki will get clarification at her next superintendent's meeting.
Yeah, actually, that doesn't mean the entire district. When they talk about, that, that, that means that if it's, for example, Cairo, none of the Cairo staff or Cairo students should have exposure. So it is specific to each school and not as a district as a whole. So we might be able to have some limited in-person instruction at Cairo and, you know, maybe Alameda or other schools. So if there's, you know, if, if none of them are exposed. But it is going to be, the larger the school, the greater the challenge for sure. So.
Yeah, I was going to say is it is actually nice that we can look at school level metrics, and I might not have said that very clearly. But Nikki's correct about that. I do suspect that once we start that, we probably will have some schools go in and out of the ability to have that. But like I said, hopefully, we can narrow the focus of the staff to those who might be the ones who are exposed to kids. And, and we don't have to rely on the county metrics, which are not good right now, as Eric said earlier. So I think there's, there's some hope that we can, can do some limited in-person instruction.
Has there been any talk? I mean, I don't remember what the metrics say. Wasn't there other metrics about the ability of doing some of these kids on IAPs? Did I miss you talk about that, about doing in-person for some demographic of kids, either sped kids or whatnot?
Yeah, I think we actually cannot allow it or disallow it or force it with any students. And we cannot use protected class as one of the criteria. So we will have to look at more at things like access, Eric. So access, I talked about the CTE program, but access could also mean that it's a student with special needs who really can't engage with a computer at all. So, and, and, you know, so access could take on a lot of different looks to it, and we'll kind of try to delineate what, what it is that we want to address in bringing kids in.
Yeah, I was, you know, just reflecting back on experience that at least one of my friends had that with her daughter, I mean, she wouldn't engage at all over the computer. And, I mean, flat out refused. And I see there being a lot of kids like that, that this just isn't going to work for them. And I'm, just like you guys, right? I mean, I'm very concerned for kiddos like that.
Yeah, us too. And the good thing also about starting comprehensive distance learning first is that we will have the ability to really know who is and isn't engaging. Obviously, we have some data on students from last spring, but because this really is a more rigorous approach, students are going to be much more engaged with their classroom and with their teacher. So it will be, it will be a good time for us to gather some information to make sure that we're targeting the right students who, who really need that kind of support.
And I appreciate the accountability pieces to it as well. So, I mean, making kids accountable, because we all know we have to do that, no matter how good our kids are.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I do have one other comment. I just want to tell Melissa, thanks for using the word wonky, because I feel like I'm the only one that uses that word. It's totally underused in our society, I think.
Even though I use it. Sorry, it's one of those words that comes to mind when you're under pressure, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Superintendent Abizou, and thank you, Director Williams, for the report as well. Do we have any public comments?
Director Corn, I have a question for Superintendent Abizou. I received the lunch delivery schedule for my kids, and I'm a bit perplexed on why we're delivering lunches to kids at the schools and at, at bus sites in the, in the middle of school, when kids are supposed to be in school from 9:30 to 10:30. Why is that the time that we're, we're doing that?
So, yeah, that's, um, so all summer, we've been delivering at one time breakfast and lunch. And we did that kind of mid, late morning, mid morning, so that we could deliver it all in one. And so when we, when we did that through summer school as well, so what, when we came back together and began creating a distance learning schedule and particularly kind of setting out times for synchronous learning, we were trying to be really thoughtful about it so that some of our younger kids might be having, getting help from their older siblings with that. And so if we did the younger siblings at one time and then the old, the older kids at, you know, separated by just a little bit different time. So that's where we started. And then we actually started thinking about how, what's this going to look like, the delivery of meals? So that email actually was going around today, and I saw, and Pam is in here, and Taryn is in here, and Annabelle. And we were all actually talking about trying to figure out what is the solution to that. And so we recognize that that is an issue, and, and we're still working through a lot of unintended consequences of, of this pandemic as a whole. So we are problem solving that. That was something that was brought to our attention early, and we're trying to figure out what the best option for that is going to be. Did you guys, I don't know if you guys came up with anything, or you're still?
We're still, I think, troubleshooting some of the ripple effects that moving, you know, transportation or moving the sites would have, but we can still go back to the drawing board on that and see maybe if it even is a problem.
Yeah. Scheduling a recess time.
Yeah, we had talked about potentially scheduling a break or a recess time when that delivery is happening. So yes, we know it could be an issue, and we're problem solving through that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Draper, for bringing that up. Thank you, Superintendent Abizou, and Taryn and Pam for working on that. Okay, we're at the public comment section. Do we have any public comments that were submitted?
No.
Okay. Since there are no public comments, we are moving into our business section. Our first item for approval tonight is approval of policy GBEB communicable diseases. For, and it says staff.
So I just have one question about this one. And then if nobody else has any discussion about any of these items, at least one through five that are on the agenda, I would make a motion that we can approve all these unless we have individual comments. Does that sound okay?
Yes, that sounds okay.
Okay, so I guess the thing that struck me was on communicable diseases. And I think it's both on the staff and the, so so JB, GBEB and or GB and JHTC, but it takes out somewhere, sorry, I got to get to the right place. It takes out the ability for board policy to do a restrictible disease. Do you remember that, Nikki or anybody?
Say that again. It takes out what?
So there was a section, here, let me find it. I apologize. Okay, so on number one, and I'm looking at JBEBA R. There's a part on number one towards the bottom of that first thing that says a disease is considered to be restrictible disease if it is listed in OAR, blah, 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 or has been designated be a restrict, restrictible disease. And then we have crossed out by board policy. So my only one concern with that is I know a few years ago, we had some conversations about head lice. And I think that's one of the ways that we restricted kids with head lice. Does this take our ability away to restrict kids with pediculosis? Right? Is that the right word? Might be the right word.
Um, so I, I don't, I don't believe so, simply because you have a separate policy for that. But I can certainly ask OSBA. They're the, actually, the ones that made these recommendations to us. So these seem, I, I guess they seem a little bit more specific when they are referring to communicable diseases, but, and I didn't see that, that that was one of them. That head lice is one of them, so.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I know it's not stated out that way, but, but I, I mean, I don't believe so. I can, I can certainly ask.
I just wonder if that's one of the ways that, you know, because some, if I remember right, it seemed like OSBA was recommending against us from having the headlights policy, but we chose.
Right.
And I wonder, even though it is a different policy, if this actually kind of takes that, our ability away. I don't know that we can really take our ability away to, to say that, but that's the one thing that struck me with this. Renee, are you following where I'm at with that?
I am, I am looking at it and, and just processing through what you're saying, that basically the board is being superseded by the local public health administrator. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I have multiple concerns with it. I mean, I think that there's, there's the potential of, headlights was the thing that first struck me, but I've also thought of things like, like COVID-19, where if it's not listed yet as a restrictible disease, I mean, I feel like a response from our board can, and can create a policy, you know, before Oregon Health Authority gets to enlist it on that, on their OAR. Because that takes legislation and, or it's a legislative change at least, so. Because that takes legislation and, or it's a legislative change at least, so. I guess what I'm advocating for is maybe not taking that part out, leaving the board policy, or it's in there.
I, I agree with that. So, but this is an AR, and it's my understanding that, does the board approve ARs?
They don't formally approve ARs, but it still obviously has some input on ARs, so.
Actually, I think that we, necessarily, but I still think that we approve the AR, just like the legislature approves the Oregon administrative rules. Brian probably can speak to that a little bit better than me.
Yeah, you guys do approve the, the ARs as well. I would recommend, you might want to run this by OSBA. It looks like they may have made the change, possibly out of an abundance of caution to protect school districts, so they might be recommending you not, you not extend that and leave it up to the local public health administrator as opposed to taking that risk on yourself. So you might just ask OSBA as far as what their thinking was, to see if they didn't take that out to try to protect school districts from taking on some additional liability.
I see. Because that, that is a real issue right now, because the legislature did not do anything with the liability for school districts and other public entities at this time, right?
Correct.
Right, but liability about COVID, the disease itself, not overall, or a liability about passing board policies.
Right, but I'm just, it kind of all fits together, right? I don't want to give up board authority.
That's a concern of mine as well.
But if this is, if we're putting, being placed in a situation where this is actually to protect the district from a liability issue, because someone says, well, you knew, and you didn't follow your policy.
Right, Brian, what, what real liability does leaving that in there? What kind of liability can it present to us?
Well, I mean, the possibility is, is that the, the school board adopts a, identifies a reportable disease that the local health administrator doesn't. So if you, if you guys are creating a restrictible disease on your list, and it's not agreed with by the local administrator, then the district has to back that up. So if there's some, you know, adverse impact on a certain group, or somebody feels discriminated against as a result of it, then you can't point to the local health administrator to say this is from them, not from us, and you have to defend that yourself. So what my concern is that OSBA might be saying, leave that up to the professionals to, to make those determinations. That way you guys don't take on any, any potential exposure for claims like that, if, if somebody does try to come in and allege that it's discriminatory or, or unfair.
But isn't that essentially kind of what we did with the head lice issue?
Correct, yes. So if, if a certain group felt that it was targeting a group of minorities or another protected class, and the local health administrator disagreed that it was, it should be identified as a restrictible or reportable disease, then you would have to prove that it's not intended to be discriminatory. It's for a protective reason to, you know, protect the, the health and, and safety of your staff and students. I don't think it's a real issue, but it's just something that they might be looking at as far as taking that away from the school board to make those determinations.
And don't get sick with head lice.
Yeah.
Right, and, and I think it was maybe Melissa or somebody wrote in the comments, I hadn't had a chance to click on it, that in all essence, head lice isn't a communicable disease, and I understand that, but it's kind of how we sort of treated it a little bit.
I think that the word they used is, is, do we consider it a restrictible disease? Would head lice be considered a restrictible disease? I think is how they designated as a restrictible disease.
So I, I guess what I would suggest is that we table, one second. That we table items, business items one and four for now, and get some clarification from OSBA about that. About this next month.
Okay, it's, do I have a second that we table one and four until we have further clarification from OSBA?
Yes, I'll say it again.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table business items one and four. Looking for policies on communicable diseases for staff and students. Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Blanca?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so that's unanimous. We will table those until we get instruction on that from OSBA. Okay, so I'm looking for approval on policy GBL personnel records. And do we still want to group these together?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve policy GBL personnel records, and policy GBLA disclosure of information, and policy IGBAH AR.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to group policy GBL, policy GBLA, and policy IGBAH AR. Director Draper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So those motions are approved of those policies. Okay, so we have a motion that was added to the agenda tonight to approve Director Draper's request. Now, on that request, I, I would like to mention again that the original request was for two things. That we, that he asked for how many teachers have left OHS in the last three years, just OHS exclusively, and how many of those teachers were dual credit teachers as well. So that was his request.
And Renee, just so I can, what's your ideas on a timeline? If we got them, if we were to receive that information by, or what do you think's fair? By the time we get board book in October, our October meeting, does that seem like a fair enough, a fair amount of time?
Only the superintendent would know.
Yeah, I think you should ask the superintendent.
Sorry, I was going with what you were saying before. Nikki, does that seem like enough time?
Yeah, my intent is to, to try to have that prepared for you by the next board meeting. And at the October board meeting at the latest, it just is all dependent on what's happening with this worldwide pandemic and starting school and all of that, but my intent is to try to deliver that to the board at next month's meeting.
I would like to just reiterate that it shouldn't take too terribly much time. It's already been, the, the names are already there, and, and it's already been published by the school district somewhere. They have that information.
So, so that being said, would it be fair to say that at the latest, the October board meeting, that this information be delivered?
I assume that we're asking Nikki that, right?
Superintendent Albizu, would that be fair to you to say it that way?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm looking for that in a motion, please.
I will make a motion to request the superintendent to answer those questions by Director, by at latest, the October board meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to request the superintendent to answer the questions by Director Draper by the October board meeting. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Director Rodriguez?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Draper?
Yes.
Director Corn, yes. Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, is there any further things that need to be discussed at this meeting? Do we have topics for future meetings?
I do not.
I just wanted to state publicly that we have received three letters of interest for the board position. The board plans to interview candidates on the 15th of September. If that will work for the candidates, we prefer to do it at that time if we can. We have our legal counsel looking into how we will schedule those appointments.
Director Corn, I reviewed some information on public meeting law in our break, and I honestly do not feel comfortable with any of the board members trying to request to exclude any public persons from a public meeting. I, I know it's, it's not, it's not fair, and it's not comfortable, but if, if, I think we have a liability issue regardless if we say that we request anybody to leave a public board meeting.
Okay, I, I understand your concerns, and I don't want to do anything that is not following the law regarding this. We will have to figure out how to make it fair with the questions for the candidates. So.
And I can, maybe we can throw this out there. Maybe if Brian comes back to us and says, hey, look, yeah, it's, because I understand where Derek's coming from too. I think that, you know, maybe people can come back and say that I was forced not to be in this public meeting because, just because they were asked, you know, maybe that isn't proper when you really look at the gist of things. But maybe what we can do is come up with three different sets of questions and ask different questions to each member, or each.
I don't think that's allowable.
I think you have to do the same question for each candidate.
And I know that's the case in like employment law. I just, you know, I just didn't know if that would be the case for a board member.
Brian, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I'll have my answer to you in the next couple of days, Renee. So as a preliminary issue, I, I think you're going to be fine excluding the non-interviewing candidates during the interviews for the, the people going ahead. Once they've completed their interview, they're perfectly able to sit in on that meeting. But I, preliminarily, I think you're going to be okay doing that, but I'll, I'll get you a formal answer in the next couple of days. So, but I don't think there's going to be a problem with that process.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Does?
Director Corn, will you please send that statute out when, when you receive it so that I can better understand it as well?
I will see that the entire board and the superintendent receive that communication. Does any member of the board have anything that they would like to see added for topics for future meetings? Okay, seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night.